Public comment time. The township board supervisors allocates a period of time during this item for those individuals who would like the opportunity to address the board supervisor on any matter. Each person addressing the board supervisor has to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. We have someone who'd like to speak tonight about comments. Judy, what's this?
Judy Canalesay, Green Crescent Drive. I was at planning at the beginning of the month. And there was a group, they're supposed to be here tonight speaking on snuffy properties. And I specifically asked them if they were going to be seeking grant money for their project. Simply yes or no question. I clearly distressed them by asking that question. They got very upset with me. And they said, no, that they were not going to be asking for any money. For no, no grant money, no LSA, no grant money, nothing. Then I see tonight's agenda and it's on the agenda that we're asking for grant money for a project, for the sewage system, for that area down there. And also, don't we have to match that grant money? So why are we, as a township, putting out money for another developer when we have our own residents that don't have it, have sewage and ones that just put out close to, what, 20,000 that they put out per house? I'm really distressed that they misled. And when I said that at the meeting, got very hostile towards me that I asked that question. And now it's on the agenda. It hasn't even been three weeks. I think instead of the supervisors being misinformed again by township management, they need to find out also how Ouija feels about this directly. There are several other issues that I saw on the agenda tonight. You know, we have got the HOA, or also regarding, I'm sorry, back to that project. They want to be an HOA. We have several HOAs in the township. They're all having problems. Look at Strabane Manor. They have rules that nobody can enforce them. The township doesn't enforce them. There's all kinds of stuff going on with that. Like, why would we want another HOA until we can figure out how we can even run an HOA in this township successfully without there being any problems? Making it an R1 instead of an R2, they want to make it an R2. There's only a couple houses that want to be put together to make it an R, need it for an R2. I think that the township needs to stop being on the back end of things and being told one thing by developers and then they come in and change things down the road. It would be better for an R1. It would be less, the more congested an area is, the worse it is for crime and other things. But I just think that they need to look at if this developer wants you to change it from an I-zone to an R-zone, it could be an R1, which would fit more into that area of Lakeview and Floral Hill area. And also, has anybody talked to the school board regarding any of this? Has anybody said, like, if you're going to big development over there, how's that going to affect the school district? I also think that we need to look at mine subsidence and insurance, what that would cost people moving into that. That was a quarry. This is on Quarry Road. It was a quarry. Also, what kind of boring testing has been done? There's a train that runs through that property. Has the railroad been notified and what do they think about it? There's a blind curb coming right under where the traffic's going to come in and out of that neighborhood. There's only one way in and out, and it's right where the blind curb is, under that railroad vessel. And so a whole development with close to 300 homes coming out right where that blind curb is. But that is going to affect both Floral Hill area, Lakeview. There were just a lot of questions and a lot of things that weren't answered. But a lot of frustration at the planning meeting. I also, let's see, sorry. I also just think, this goes back to what I said before. Instead of just rubber stamping through things because of what you're being told by these developers. Look at Meadows Landing. It was less than a month later and they pulled out after saying they were coming. And now we're left with a big sewage bill. The DEP still hasn't approved that project. But this board approved it even though planning said not to. Township residents are paying a higher tap-in fee now that that's gotten larger. And again, the residents are, well, kind of sucked out Floral Hill that had to pay that. I just think that this township keeps looking out for developers and is not looking out for residents. And real quick, also Berry Road regarding the thing going on with the grant money that you guys are for the LSA thing for the project up there. Berry Road is a hot mess. It is one of the most dangerous roads in the township. We still have residents that live there who they can't even cross the street to get their mail. And now we're going to put in a place up there. So unless you can cut the, maybe cut the traffic off. Don't let people exit Berry Road. Cut it off. And Narnes was okay with that. I don't know if you were, I think that must have been a planning meeting. But Berry Road, we were never supposed to allow them to make a right behind where lobby and all that is. Originally, they were not allowed to make a right out of there. And it was never brought in front of the public. It was just decided on another meeting to let people start making a right. That is very dangerous. The zip codes all live there. Their lives are in danger every day, like I said, just to go get their mail. We've got all kinds of issues with the water runoff down there, that why, everything. Why are we putting more stuff that's going to cause more traffic on that road and asking for LSA money for it? We need stuff for our township, not for everybody else. Thank you.
Anyone else like to?
Just the owner, South Main Street. I'd like to reiterate on some questions that are some statements that she made. I'm here as a property owner in the township and not as a member of the Ouija board. But we sent the township a letter and we know Brandon has issues getting the facts straight, if he gets them to the supervisors at all. And it said, "The board requests that the township consider public grant funds to be used for upgrade the quarry pump station to accommodate all future growth and capacity requirements for the quarry pump station watershed that the township desires, and not just for single private development." This township must have a, have learning deficiencies because the taxpayers bent over backwards for Bass Pro and Tanger. How'd that work out? All of that tax money we were supposed to get from Bass Pro. You remember the people that had down to every last golf ball that was going to be hit every day all year? You know, we got nothing out of that except a bill and stuck with 20% of the taxes that we were due. We have the fiasco at Meadows Landing. It's just a fiasco. I saw an email the other day that the reason a deficiency letter wasn't given to the owners of Meadows Landing is because there was too many problems to issue a deficiency letter. But yet this board, going against the board, your zoning board or whatever board it was, they told you not to do it. You guys went ahead and did it. Why would you do that? You know, how many tax dollars wrongfully went to Meadows Landing for the sewers? Just so you could get Burkitt Manor, another bait and switch. And here we have this development down here, and I'm not against those people developing that property. But you know what? We're all going to have to pay for the schools, the upgrades in the schools to accommodate all those kids. I think that's enough for the taxpayers to pay. If you're going to do something with grant money, make it benefit the residents, not the people that are wanting to come into the township. Let them pay their own way. Let them pay, let the people coming in pay their own way. And Bob Weber, I've read enough on this Strabane Manor stuff. If I were each of you, other board members, I wouldn't take anything that our conflicted chairman of the board and our conflicted township manager has to say on anything that has to do with Strabane Manor. Because that's, again, going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money. And again, I'll ask you, why has this not been turned over to the township's insurance carrier? There's a half a million dollars worth of screw-ups over there that we're going to be asked to pay for, and that's wrong. And you were the chairman of the HOA from day one until the day you came here. Did you come here to cover up all the problems there? Just ask a question. Feel free to answer.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, move on. Number four, media minutes.
To those that don't know me, my name is Paul Winter. I'm Lieutenant and Chief Engineer with the South Strabane Fire Department. I've been a volunteer for South Strabane for seven years. Last month's meeting, I listened in online and I was rather hurt by some of the information that was shared. A lot of our volunteers for decades have worked tirelessly to serve this community. We have come strides in difference from the beginning of this year to where we are today in terms of unity camaraderie and the hard work that we've put forth. I was rather hurt, and I know a lot of our members were, to hear that misinformation was being shared about things not becoming better. I know there are a select few that worked tirelessly, myself included. I just wanted to clear that information up.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else like to speak? Great. Just moving on before media minutes. Need a motion to approve the budget media minutes dated October 17, 2022. Okay, thank you. First and second, Mr. Lukic. Second by Mr. Murphy. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. No? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries five zero. Need a motion to approve the informational media minutes on October 24, 2022.
I do not have those prepared. Those are the next one.
Okay, we'll let that go. Motion to approve the irregular media minutes, October 25. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. In a second, please. Thank you, Ms. Lukic. Any further discussion, any discussion on it? All in favor of motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five zero. Motion to approve the budget media minutes, October 27, 2022. Need a motion, please. Thanks, Mr. Murphy. In a second.
Second.
Thank, Mr. Lukic. Any discussion? All in favor of approving motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries five zero. Number five. Financial business. Approve, need a motion to approve the payroll for the periods October 16th to October 29, 22, and October 30 through November 12, 2022, and bills for the period October 22 through November 18, 2022. Need a motion, please. Motion to approve. Thanks, Mr. Lukic. In a second.
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Murphy. Any discussion on it? All in favor of motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries five zero. Number six, announcements and recognition. Executive session, like to let the folks know that we had executive sessions on November 17 and an executive session before the meeting this evening concerning personnel and litigation. That's on a South Strabane Township flag. And I'd like to bring everyone's attention. The most current comp into plan took place, approved around 2017. And one of the things in there, recommendation there was for the township to consider working with the Trinity Area School District to energize the community's youth and becoming involved with township activities. And associated with that, all of the board members attended the Pennsylvania State Associate Township Supervisors Conference, State Conference this past spring. And one of the suggestions they had up there, try to encourage all townships throughout the Commonwealth to develop a flag, to promote our township, of course. And knowing that, and the board has discussed that item, we've reached out to the Trinity Middle School to ask if they'd be interested in helping to design a flag for the township. Thanks to the principal, Mr. Casteldick, and also social studies teacher, Mr. Tarquillo and his middle school students. They have agreed to present their project, going to develop a design for a South Strabane Township flag. And we've reached out to the schools and bring them back, bring them into the fold a little bit. They were very excited about participating in the project like that. The kids are real excited about it. So we're anxious to see what we come up with, okay? But I do want to thank the principal, Mr. Casteldick, and also Mr. Tarquillo for taking the lead on this. Okay, thank you. Next thing is the property beautification recognition. And Mr. Stanek, I'm sure you're going to start, or maybe Mr. Burnt will take care of this for us. Representative, the green team. Okay.
Last year, the green team, which is a committee formed by the supervisors to look at environmental issues and such in the municipality, developed the concept of a beautification award. Basically, it's an effort to recognize those citizens who go above and beyond in terms of keeping their properties in an exemplary fashion, in a beautiful fashion, as a model to the rest of us in the community. And so last year, we did, in fact, recognize nine awardees. And this year, this evening, we will recognize another nine. Now, we don't have a band here tonight or a drum roll, but we're going to start with residential and just to keep the suspense of our high level, I'm going to start the third place and we'll work our way up to first place. So if you have any heart medication, you need to take that. All right, third place, residential, South Strabane Township, 216 Dodd Drive. Tom Zenny. I hope I'm pronouncing the name right. Zenny. Who didn't know I was going to get it wrong? Sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Zenny is with us. And what do we have? Okay, on the wall there, we have Mr. Zenny's property. I don't know how well anybody can see that. Some of you are closer and younger than I am, but looks pretty good from here. That is our third place award. But we have a certificate or something.
I do. I'm all right here.
All right. Why don't you bring them all up here and I'll give Mr. Zenny his award.
Judy, wait.
Go for it.
Oh, right. I want to thank you for this, for South Strabane doing this. It's not the first award I've ever received for the property. I've been lighting my home 31 years. Byron Smilak no longer with us. Used to call it, "Oh, we'll be light." There's 26,000 clear lights along with deer that moved left and right, up and down. So that was in 2008 and it was done in Pittsburgh area. And it was done by vote. I didn't know I had that many friends. In the summer of 2009, ESPN was still in Pittsburgh. And they had a property contest. I won the contest. That was done by submitting photos of your property in the ESPN Pittsburgh. And they used station people as well as tips conservatory, master gardeners, a couple of master gardeners were included. And along with that, I won, and I didn't know it at the time, but I won over $5,000 in merchandise and property. They also, remember, Guy Junker, and I can't remember his partner, they did their show from my driveway for two hours. Plus, they had dinner for everyone. And we had off and on 200 people. And when they ran out of ribs and chicken, they bought pizzas. And they had enough beer for I can't tell you how many, as well as soda. And I even got on the air for about 15 minutes. So the station manager was there. It was a real big deal and I was real proud of the property. And Karen Whitfield of the Observer Reporter, she came and did a story and they did a two-page layout for the Sunday edition of the Observer Reporter with color photos. So obviously, we had a big banner up for the, for the radio show and everything. And everybody was, it was a great time. Can't tell you how many shovels and wheelbarrows I've been through for all this. But I've done everything myself. And that was the key to the ESPN award. You had to do it yourself. You could not have, it couldn't be done by a landscaping company. So I submitted it and I told them, I put in my own lawn sprinkling system. And I told them, I farmed out the ditch witching. But I wanted to be truthful with them. But they, it didn't matter. They, they called me. I did a TV or a radio commercial for them. I was on the air for a month, twice an hour. Even I got tired of myself. So Karen did all that and pictures and everything. It was a big deal at the time. And with the Christmas lights, people may not have known my name. Most everybody did not. I'm down at the corner of Dodd and Robin, the lower end of Dodd Drive. Because the Dodd runs on and on. And if they'd seen me at the gas station or seen me in the grocery store and said, "Hey, you're the guy with the lights." And that's how I was known, was the guy with the lights. But this award, regardless of place, it has no distinction for me. Because now, I'm 75 years old. And that was going to happen. At 75, my knees are just... My knees are to say... So I can't do what I want to do. So I appreciate. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, congratulations. And I will pronounce your name right the next time. All right, second place, residential beautification award goes to 923 East Bow Street. Mr. Mark McCurdy. No, Mark is not here. Picture of his home is on the wall there. It's right across from the Presbyterian Church on Bow Street, if you know. Church sits down right over the hillside. And it's also next door to the folks that have a horse and buggy lawn decoration in their front yard, in case you're trying to place it. It's very nice. I know Mark is out of town and he will not be here tonight, but we will make sure that he gets this award and congratulate him. But a round of applause. McCurdy Residence. And first place in the residential area. Great, I'm going to announce this name, too. 370 Floral Hill Drive, Debbie and Tom Reggits.
He did it.
Did I get it right?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Right here, Frack.
Come on down.
She waits here also, isn't she? Tom, is your waiting too?
Yes.
Bring her up also.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we want to recognize both of you. I'm sure one of you is dropping the bus and the other one's doing all the work.
I don't know about the hurt she does, but... Oh, okay. Well, I do the weeding. He does all the designing and planting and all that.
At least they don't argue with each other.
It wouldn't look like it does, but I'll...
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't want to forget this. I'm going to throw it in here in the middle where I should have put it in the beginning. The first place recipients were judged by the Mark Washington Garden Club. And we want to thank them publicly for their efforts. And then the green team and the supervisors voted on the second and third place award. All right, we move now to commercial. And third place in the commercial category is Huntington Bank. Is there anybody here from Huntington Bank? All right, we will make sure that they receive that. Team, I believe, and picture on the wall, which you're having trouble placing. That's across the street from the Walnut Grill, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's in the same plaza with Red Robin.
Speaking of the Walnut Grill, second place goes to the Walnut Grill. I don't know what made me think of that. Everybody here from the Walnut Grill? And I might have to hand deliver this one. It's here from Walnut Grill. Those are pictures in there or driven by that. There's an area between Route 19 and the Walnut Grill that has cranes and falcons and alligators and all kinds of stuff. But it's a thing of rare beauty to find in the middle of an urban area. But that is part of their water drainage system and it's just very, very well done, I do believe. Speaking of which, we have first place, the Old Mill Commercial Development, which is the mother land, if you will, of the Walnut Grill and all the other entities there. And again, go into a mall, you see a lot of asphalt, you see a lot of brick, you see a lot of glass, you see a lot of dirt. You don't see many flowers or works of art or things like that. You just had that one picture?
Yeah, right on in the...
Okay, that's right. But when you go to the Old Mill, they literally have works of art, sculpture and things. I mean, that's crazy good. And we salute them for that and we appreciate what they've done and we give them a round of applause. All too shy to show up here this evening. All right, now we move to the third and final category, which is agricultural land. And the third place award recipient is 19 Booth Road, Francis and Carol Startcar. They're here. Okay. Second place, same street. 199 Booth Road, Linda Pushcarriage. Is Linda here? No. Last but not least, we have first place in the agricultural category presented to 790 Berry Road Zipco Brothers Farm. I know they're...
I saw that sweater on Facebook.
Yes, you did.
Pretty sure I did.
Yeah, this is a real surprise. I want to thank Penny for giving us the application and Nancy for actually filling it out. Joe, he helps keep the farm clean and green. He works really hard. That's my cousin, taking the head. Dad, Uncle Joe. Nancy has a house that's beautiful. I mean, you have beautiful shrub, shrubbery, the flowers. I mean, when you look, look at the house, I mean, just the property is just beautiful. Third picture of us. But this became, is a very big surprise to me. Thank you.
Well deserved.
All right, that concludes my remarks. I would remind you all, this barring the unforeseen, we will be doing this again next year. And you're welcome to nominate your own place or your neighbor or just somebody you drive by every once in a while and look at and say, "Wow, somebody's really gone above and beyond." And we salute them. Thank you.
Jimmy?
Real quick, everyone who won today, make sure you grab a sign that you can put in your yard so you can show off to everyone that you signed to.
And their certificates.
Yes, I have.
You want to pass them on now?
Mr. Stimmel has donated gift certificates to the winners. So make sure you get those and support Mr. Stimmel, who is a resident and merchant here in our municipality. All right, passing out the signs as we, as we speak. All right, passing out the lines as we, as we speak.
I want all of them. Thank you. Remember walking off the street? I thought you would. Forgot to mention it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Burns. Well done. Okay, number seven, township reports and presentations, municipal separate storm sewer system, MS report. The board supervisor allocates a period of time during this item for comments regarding the topic of stormwater. Each person addressed to the board supervisors asked to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak to that topic? Township manager report.
Nothing to report, uh, okay. Good to see you, sir. Happy Thanksgiving. The office, the office is going to be closed on Thursday and Friday this week. We'll be open next Monday. And, um, have a happy, happy Thanksgiving.
Secretary of Treasury report in hand?
Yep, in hand.
Thank you, Mr. Standing. Township solicitor, please. Mr. Michael?
The office has been involved with various matters involving planning and other issues. It's also involved in some issues involving litigation. That's it.
Hey, Rob, township engineer?
Uh, yeah, you have my report. Two things I wanted to mention were, uh, on the LSA application for the engine replacement, unfortunately, we're, uh, we were informed that that project will not be eligible for LSA funds. Um, so we'll have to look for other avenues there. Um, and then I was gonna mention something about the grant application, but I see it's also on the agenda for later resolution. So I assume we have some additional discussion at that point. So there are other questions that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, unfinished business, uh, eight A, that's gonna remain on the table. Uh, eight B, motion approving an agreement with the North Strabane Township Senator Authority, N S T S A, Washington, East Washington Joint Authority, W E W J A, and Washington Penn Plastic Company Inc., W P P, to allow a sanitary sewer connection from the W P P facility sixteen oh four State Route one-three-six to connect to the N S T S A treatment plant. Mr. Standing, please, Mr. Griffin, please.
So August twenty-third, non-legislative meeting, the board received an update regarding the request by North Strabane Township Municipal Authority on behalf of Washington Penn Plastics to allow the vessel facility to tap into public sanitary sewers operated by North Strabane Municipal Authority. Currently, the township does not have sanitary sewer service in its vicinity. The closest connection is just west of Route one-three-six, the station road. Because the township cannot adequately serve the company, it's time to apply the flow sewage to the North Strabane Municipal Authority, being a riverbed supply plant located across one-three-six. Since that time, and at the board's request, the township legal council, Township Manager, work with the Legion and North Strabane Township Municipal Authority and the company drafted finalized the agreement allowing the company to establish sanitary sewer service, which is flowing approximately four-hundred-six-thousand gallons per year, which is a need. To the treatment, by North Strabane Municipal Authority. And there are several conditions in that agreement. Most important of which is each entity will conduct inspections for the installation from Washington Penn Plastics. As well as Washington Penn Plastics will have to pay a tapping fee to North Strabane Municipal Authority for tapping in. And then when sewer becomes approximately a hundred-and-fifty feet within the, within the distance of that property, um, in South Strabane, they will then tap into the, uh, the Legion Public System and pay the necessary tapping fee at that time. Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. In a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on it? All in favor of motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. New business. Motion authorizing a letter of support of Washington County Local Share Account Application from Washington County Transportation Authority for a proposed local suburban transit facility located at three-seventy-five Berry Road. Do we have someone here this evening to speak to this?
We do. Mr. Peters in attendance to, uh, the question.
I may send up.
The horse and buggy on Bow Street, did they wreck your work?
It's not ours.
Okay. I hope maybe we're cutting back a little bit.
No, not, not for that extreme. Um, uh, good evening, everybody. My name is Sheila Gomita. I am actually a South Strabane resident as well and the executive director of Washington County Transportation Authority. Um, just to give a little bit of background about the transportation authority, for those who may not be aware, um, our agency was created by the county commissioners under the Municipal Authorities Act. We are governed by a seven-member board of directors. Um, our mission is to connect people who live, work and learn and play in Washington County and surrounding areas by providing high-quality accessible public transportation services. And we do that through two modes of service, the fixed route, which is traditionally larger buses that you see on the road, um, and the shared ride paratransit service. Our fixed route service operates on a set, set schedule en route. Uh, we have five weekday and two Saturday routes. We provide about sixty thousand rides a year on our fixed route services. Our shared ride paratransit is more of the door-to-door advanced reservation service, primarily serving people with disabilities and senior citizens. And we do about a hundred-and-forty thousand rides, um, a year on that service. Our service generally operates from about five AM until eight PM Monday through Saturday, although our Saturday service is pretty minimal. Um, and we currently do not operate any Sunday service. So we are an administrative agency. We have thirteen employees. We have an office located on East Chestnut Street in Washington. And we have two private subcontractors currently that actually operate the service and, and employ about eighty-five employees in total. Uh, currently, um, if you flip to the next page, it's just a, uh, a copy of the site overview of the map of three-seventy-five Berry Road. Um, currently we have inadequate facilities to safely store and maintain our vehicles. So we have been for about five years looking for, um, property to develop a new facility that will allow us to grow and sustain our services. Um, we, uh, found the Tower Golf property available for sale last year and we believe that that location was ideal, met our size requirement and checked off many of our boxes. Um, the next page just kind of details an overview of what we're looking at in terms of size and how that is broken out. An eighty-eight thousand square foot facility, uh, that will include administration, operation space primarily for dispatch, uh, safety, um, and, and operational management. Uh, we have vehicle maintenance that will include maintenance space, tools and park storage and a bus wash. Uh, vehicle storage, uh, would be interior for all of our vehicles. And we have approximately eighty, uh, vehicles that would be stored indoors. And, um, and it also includes site amenities, including fuel. Um, hopefully C N G is what we're looking to go to, um, and exterior parking as well. So there are a lot of peak times for vehicles leaving and entering the facility. I know that's something that people may be very interested in with, um, you know, Berry Road being, um, an issue for so many. Um, we are typically looking at most of our action being between four-thirty and eight AM and then six and eight, six to eight PM, um, Monday through Friday. Um, as I said, we own about eighty vehicles, but they're not all on the road at the same time or leaving the, the depot at the same time. At most, we would probably be looking about twenty-three vehicles. It would be leaving in a two-hour peak time between four-thirty AM and six-thirty AM, so not a real high-traffic-volume timeframe. Um, and then in the afternoon, uh, you're probably looking at us spread out about ten vehicles every hour that would be coming back in in the afternoon. The estimated cost of the facility is forty million dollars with an eight-million-dollar contingency. So we're looking at a total of about forty-eight million dollars. Uh, that will be funded primarily through federal and state dollars, but we have submitted a LSA request, uh, application requesting three-hundred-thousand dollars to match a thirteen million dollars for the first phase of the project. Uh, the redevelopment authority asked that we obtained a letter of support from South Strabane for that LSA application and that's the reason why we're here this evening. Uh, the last page on there, um, provides just sort of a high-level look at the preliminary design that we've drafted so far for, uh, the property. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Burns. In a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion carries four-one. Okay, letter B, consideration of an application for preliminary and final minor division from Thomas and Yvette Kissling with a Kissling subdivision plan number one located at eighteen-eighty-five East Bow Street in the A-one zoning district. Mr. Standic?
So on December twenty-third, twenty-one, the township received an application, uh, for preliminary and final minor subdivision for Kissling subdivision plan. Um, A-one zoning district. This is a parcel off of East Bow Street, eighteen-five Bow Street. The property is approximately seventy-two acres in size, access to a private drive on East Bow Street. Um, one belonging to the property, which is the residence, uh, residence of the applicant. There existed, it provides a way on the western side, a parcel sewage is provided. On our subject system. Describe the area we're reviewing. Um, the applicant initially proposed a sub by the parcel of five lots with the existing house located on the area parcel, Great Florida parcel. Matter was considered, um, several times over the course of January sixth, July seventh, October sixth. Planning commission. Uh, over the course of those meetings, concerning the various sewage, from Salvo, emergency vehicle access and operations and maintenance, various properties were all raised. Certainly, the applicant has submitted an updated set of plans, eliminating all previous proposed lots or any assembly to convey a piece of property from one person.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. The folks here tonight? So do you have any thing you want to offer or make any statements? Thank you very much. Anyone else on the board? Any statements, uh, discussion? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. You're welcome.
Oh. I'm here to sit down.
Thanks. Okay, let her see. Uh, I'm moving a motion to table this particular item. Ask me for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. All in favor of table in this item, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Letter D, pre-application meeting with Snuffy Investments LP regarding a proposed planned residential development along Corey Road, further identified as parcel number six-hundred-dash-zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-three-six-dash-zero-zero. Mr. Standic? Okay, you're white guy. Okay. Mr. Standic, want to get a start? The folks here to explain this or give the brief?
I think we have a representative in attendance. The property, um, development team, uh, we have, they have been through three applications of planning commission. Um, what's more, we'll see tonight is a proposed planned residential development, one hundred and thirty-four acres. Currently done by two, includes a layout for two-hundred-and-ninety-four lots, five fifty-four duplex units and two forty-four building detest units. Determining access is provided for a four-way intersection with Lakeview Drive, Corey Road, as well as park and rec. Amenities that will be proposed, trails, success in community parks, stormwater facilities that will need to be addressed for the property and, uh, when the side lots on the side of the street. So I'll turn that over to the development team. Go ahead.
Now, good evening. My name is Mike Wetzel, firm Victor Wetzel Associates. And as you've mentioned, we're here here just for the pre-application, uh, review for the proposed Snuffy property. It's at a hundred-and-thirty-four acres and, and proposing three types of, uh, uh, housing products in regard to the, the plan. Duplex units, uh, as well as lifestyle, single-family. Both of those are kind of designed more towards the empty nester in regard to the plan. And then there'll also be the, uh, typical single-family home. So once again, two-hundred-and-ninety-four, uh, overall units. Uh, with this, we, you know, are just here for the pre-application, but also to discuss that the property is currently zoned in the industrial zoning district and will need to be rezoned uh, to the R-two residential district for the, uh, PRD. So as being just a, uh, pre-application, this is just our first step in regard to just the review. Uh, we'll need to move forward in regard to the, uh, rezoning. We've made application in regard to the rezoning of the plan. Uh, hope to be able to have a series of, uh, public meetings associated with this project, not only for the rezoning, but in the future, uh, the PRD. So there's probably at least three public hearings that will take place in regard to this project. Uh, one with the planning commission for the rezoning, two with the supervisors for the rezoning, and then when we, even when we submit the tentative PRD plan, uh, there'll be a third, uh, public hearing. So, uh, this is not at all a fast track in regard to the site. Just once again, a pre-application to talk about the, uh, proposed use of the Snuffy property. Uh, with that said, we'll kind of go through our, our presentation. This is the exact same presentation that was done under the, uh, planning commission meeting, uh, earlier this month. But in relationship to the site, once again, this is, uh, our South Strabane Township. Our site is located really around the middle of, uh, South Strabane Township. Right along and through here is the interchange with, uh, Interstate seventy and seventy-nine where it heads down south within the property. In this particular plan, it's the net development, uh, land, uh, map associated with the township. And the darker colors represent really the, the, the buildable areas associated within the township. And once again, our property is located right through that portion of the circle. Uh, going through with the conservation, uh, uh, the, uh, the plan in regard to the, uh, the township. Uh, this is a, just a blow-up of the site uh, where we outlined the, uh, the steep slopes. Once again, the site area, Interstate seventy, seventy-nine going south along here. The lighter the color, the, the more developable the property is. More colors, you start to see in through there's a word, we have a lot more slopes. You can kind of see through the map, we kind of do have some color right along and through here. We'll kind of show that more as a site detail in regard to that. Next is in regard to the sensitive lands associated with, uh, the township. Uh, where you see the green areas, those are the more sensitive lands within, within the area. So when you look along our property area, a lot of the white, white means very well in regard to the development potential of that particular property. And really the colors of the gray here represent where some of the slopes do, do exist. And then once again, that's the blow-up of the development, uh, developable land area, uh, our site location through here. And you can see based on the, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, this is a highly developable site in relationship to the, the property. So when we look at a little bit more detail in regard to the actual site itself, once again, we have right along and through here, the, uh, the interstate through here, the interchange down for the south. Corey Road and through here and Lake, like, Lake Mont, uh, in regard to, uh, Lakeview, I'm sorry, Lakeview Drive right along and through this section. Uh, the property area along and through here is located in black. Uh, this is an actual detailed, uh, slope legend. White represents slopes within the zero to fifteen percent range. The yellow represents fifteen to twenty-five. The orange area represents twenty-five to thirty-five. And then the fuchsia color is thirty-five percent greater through here. Well, Corey, into here, you can see that we have quite a bit of, uh, steep slopes that taken account along its frontage through here. And then once again, back along into here, we have some various pockets within the area of the various slope ranges through here. One, I want also to note there is a, uh, high-pressure gas line that goes through the property right along and through here, uh, which makes regard to some of the, the depth, uh, development potential, just because of that location and access into the site. So in regard to the master plan, once again, uh, two-hundred-and-ninety-four units within the plan. We look surrounding the, uh, the property through this section. We have a Lake, Lakeview Drive along through here. Corey Road through this, this section. Lakeview continues all the way along and through here. And over and through here is the South Strabane Community Park area within the plan. Uh, so when we look at the plan, once again, we have three different types of housing, uh, structures within the plan. Uh, once again, we have the, uh, duplex area, which is located right along the frontage and through here. There'll be fifty-four duplex, uh, units or twenty-seven lots. There are roughly twelve-thousand-five-hundred square feet per lot area for both of them. Hundred and two feet wide, twenty-foot front yard setback, ten-foot sides and, and twenty-foot... Hundred and two feet wide, twenty-foot front yard setback, ten-foot sides and twenty-foot rears within the plan. Within that area, what we're doing is trying to create a bunch of, we'll say loop roads associated within, within the plan to this section, and this would be one of the typical elevations of the duplex buildings in through here and the floor plan. Once again, more designed for the empty nester throughout the plan, more of a single living type of design in relationship to these particular type of units. In regard to the lifestyle, single family, once again, more designed to the empty nester. These are once again, still more like a patio home, single-story living in regard to the plan. Once again, through the road over along and through here, we're creating a series of loops within the plan. These areas are also located more in the interior portion of the site. We have ninety-four of these lifestyle, single-family lots, around seven thousand eight hundred square feet, sixty-two feet wide. Once again, twenty-foot front yard, ten-foot side and twenty-foot rear area. Once again, a two-car garage associated with it, along as we showed them through here. Two bedrooms associated with the plan, and they'd be all located within the plan's central location of the site. Just as we point through, we have several areas of little parks that take place within this area of the, the lifestyle homes. And then lastly, our third is more of the traditional single family. Through here, there'd be a hundred and forty-eight of these single-family type homes. They're more along the periphery of the property, continuing along through here, craving the loops of the, of the road areas within the plan. Usually a, either a, a two-story building along through here, several, as well as having basements associated with, within the plan. Same kind of lot designs in regard to squats, where footage is seven thousand eight hundred square feet, sixty-two feet wide, and the same twenty-foot front yard and ten-foot size associated with that plan. As we look through here, the, the green areas and through here represent open space within the plan. We are proposing about fifty-two acres of open space, or about forty percent of the overall site area will be located in open space. Excuse me. So as we look at the road design in regard to the layout, what we want to be able to do is to distribute traffic throughout the, the plan associated with it. We'll have a single access located right here at the intersection with Lakeview Drive and Corey through, through this section. And what we do is when we come in, we'll have a boulevard road, we'll go over that area, and we want to be able to distribute traffic as quickly as we can throughout the plan. One of the nice things in regard to the road layout is we're creating a lot of loops within the plan and creating little neighborhoods overall. Only one cul-de-sac street within the whole plan. So it's a very walkable type of community that will, that will exist. And you can see with the layout of the, the road systems, really where we are protecting a lot of the steeper slopes within, within the plan area through those sections. Once again, we do have the steeper slopes over along and through here, and then the high-pressure gas line that takes place right along this portion of the property. So as I mentioned in regard to, we are proposing a, a single entrance. What we are looking at is doing a boulevard entrance. We'll have two roads associated with the area with a green landscape island in the, in the middle. This will be able to allow, if there is an issue at all, in regard to an accident, you're always able to use the other side of the road. Very similar in regard to the Newberry development that was built over north of, north of the property or the township to be able to have this type of boulevard road. There'll be no homes associated on frontage of that street, so there will never be that type of cars backing up onto that location of, of the development. And once again, what we want to be able to do is come in, distribute the, the traffic as quickly as we can within the development. Once again, parks are very important regard to the layout of a PRD. Under this particular location, we're proposing, proposing four parklets. We have a parklet located right along and through here. Parklet located over along and through this section. Parklet located along and through here. And then a parklet further back behind these units where we'll also have the walking trails located in through here. As you see, these parklets are very prominent in regard to its location, very friendly for the neighborhood to be able to have use to those land areas, so, and very large in size as they use. As we move forward in regard to the development of the PRD, we'll kind of show the types of uses that could occur within the parklets zones. One of the other main features is the neighborhood park. It's about a four-acre parcel that will be provided right along and through here. Relatively, we'll say in regard to Pennsylvania flat in relationship to its, its layout. Be able to have all sorts of uses within that, that area in regard to a large neighborhood park. So when we take all the parklets and neighborhood parks, we're about a little over eleven acres of parks that will be, be provided within, within the plan. And as we all know, the South Termain Community Park is just to the, the northeast of, of the site. This is once again, the park area in through this area. Very important to be able to have some interconnection between the art development and, and the community park throughout the site. And we've also taken into account that you've already had a community park master plan for this. So we've laid out your master plan in relationship to the park, next to the Snuffy Farms development area within, within this section, and how we can have some interconnectability between the two sites. So as we look at that, we'll have two trail connections to the park. One at the end of the cul-de-sac in, in this area and through here, that would be able to connect to the asphalt trail through this portion. Then a secondary more trail connection at this location over to the community park. One of the important things is, once again, what we feel is we want to be able to provide an emergency access more to that eastern property area. So at the end of the cul-de-sac, we'll have a ten-foot asphalt road that will come along to their fully graded and be able to tie into the, the park system itself. It'll be used only for emergency purposes, but with that particular one will be a paved road access. Into their, more of a ten-foot wide scenario, only open with barriers at each side, so people don't cut through. But we'll go through those details when we get into the tentative plans. So as I mentioned, we'll have a need for the rezoning of the property. Again, here's the site over here. We have the industrial zoning that's all part of our property. The R two zoning along here and R one section. So we'll be looking and doing and have a supplemental in regard to the rezoning request of the property to the R two zoning district. And you can see then the relationship of the plan in through here. Once again, as we look at the overall plan, you can see really where we do have a lot of the open space. Again, forty percent of the site will be in open space. Lot of the, especially in the large, single-family home, the single-family home, traditional, single-family homes. All those lots and majority of those lots you can see have their rear yard space onto open space. You see the relationship of, of the parks, parks over through here, here, here. In this section, and once again, the community park area within, within its plan. Stormwater, just as we go through, we'll have stormwater located along this portion. Stormwater over this area within the plan. Right now, we're at the master plan level that's going to lead us to the rezoning within the proposed Snuffy property. So we like, once again, look at the comprehensive plan and the future land use that's in the comprehensive plan. The yellow area represents low-density residential. So once again, that's showing that that comprehensive plan would like to have residential located within, within this area of the township. Not necessarily industrial, so we're really kind of following the comprehensive plan. And then just a couple of slides, once again, with the comprehensive plan is to continue to provide a full range of housing types throughout the community to encourage retention of long-term residents and to attract new generations of residents. Once again, we're really providing three types of housing within the plan. Half of our units are going to be more targeted towards the empty nester within the plan, which is very important relate in the, in that relationship. The other half are going to be more of the traditional single family. And lastly, once again, as part of the comprehensive plan, it's important to have pedestrian and bike connectivity within the development. We are providing that in regard to our road system, sidewalk system, as well as our interconnection to the, the park next door. So with that said, once again, this is our, just our pre-application review in regard to the Snuffy property. We can, we look forward to continuing our, our work in regard to the rezoning of the site, but we're glad to answer any questions the board might have in regard to our proposed master plan for Snuffy. Yes, sir.
I'm a little confused. You said there was to be a roadway that leads into the park. But then you said it was going to be locked and nobody could use it, so I don't see the interconnectivity if it's only an emergency.
Well, no, that's only for emergency vehicles to use that. Last thing, last thing we want to do is to have a resident or somebody from the park to use that section right into here as a, as a, as a road. It's not being built to road standards. It's being built to, to a ten-foot wide asphalt trail for emergency, emergency use. We don't want to encourage any traffic to occur between vehicle access to occur along that road.
That's not my question. My question is, if a person was living in your development and they wanted to go to the park, are you saying they have to get in their car and go out and drive around?
No, no.
Or is there a way to get there?
Yeah, we'll have the one, one trail and then the asphalt drive. What we're, what most likely would happen is there would be like a bollard at the end, a removable bollard at, at each end, so that a car would not drive.
I got it through there.
So we will have that walkway system that lockers, bikes can use. That will be a paved system, but if in case of emergency, the police or the fire department needs to have access, we'll be able to have access to that bollard to remove it and get into the site that way.
And there's parklet area. Do you have any initial plans to, what the valve will be put in there? Maybe it could be recreational type things?
They'll be recreational. Right now, we're just at the master plan level. As I said during the presentation, once we get into, if the rezoning is successful in regard to the, the plan, we'll need to submit a tentative PRD supplemental, and we'll be showing more detail on a relationship of what will be happening in each one of the parklets as well as the community park area. So that detail still to come.
Where, where does the railroad transporter property?
Yeah. You're building a plan. So the railroad runs along the southern portion of the property. Not going to be disturbed at all, not going to be grading anywhere near it. It's owned by Alany Valley Railroad. I believe there's one to two trains that go through there with a small amount of cars a day. No impact to the site by any means. So yeah, it's, it's the very southern portion of the site. Right along the, basically right along the edge of the property line, it's right there. That's correct.
Any other questions? Are you going to be, I know Corey Road is not in the bestest condition. And you also have that railroad trestle down there.
Uh huh.
Are you looking at any upgrades to that road, or what, what about the railroad trestle? Because I know that's like going on a sharp bend right there.
Sure. We're going to be needing to have a traffic study done in regard to this PRD plan. We'll be looking in regard to some of the conditions and traffic studies. So that detail still will follow as plans move forward.
Because that looks like a lot of homes going down into that area, and like I said, that road is like, it's an old country lane.
Yes. So, and like I says, we still have that detail to follow in regard to the engineering drawings. A lot of that detail will be done under the tentative PRD plan as we move forward in the new project.
One of our residents had a question, okay?
Sure.
You want to, well, sir.
Yeah, Marsha Deep Six Fox Drive. I actually have two. Are you concerned about having only one entrance and exit being the same in such a large plan?
No, in fact, that's, that's all part of our design that we have in through here. Very much like Newberry, further north in the township. We are having that boulevard road into here, and the way our road system is, we're designing it to try to distribute traffic throughout, into the plan.
I'm more concerned with like the emergency vehicles, because I know the fire chief is very, very sensitive to getting his unit around. Seems to me like there's a lot of loops, a lot of cul-de-sacs. So I'm just trying to make sure that he is happy with the safety and the development of this. Yeah, but look at all those loops and stuff. They look pretty tight.
Well, it's, it's a small picture.
And really, when you get into more of the loop road design, that always means there's another way out.
Right.
In, in through there, which is why, you know, we only have one cul-de-sac within the plan. So if, if you end up having a situation right into here, you can always go back this way, or you can always go back this way. If you have a situation right into here, you can either go with, that's the advantage of, of the loop road design that takes place. Where cul-de-sacs, if there are, is a problem, that's, you do have an issue. We always find, and I believe we already had some preliminary discussions with the, the police and fire and the EMS in regard to this plan.
Because I know at a board meeting, we had discussed to make sure they were as large as humanly possible. And now that you are in the development stages, I want to make sure that he is getting what he needs.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other board member?
Just with what she said, I, I, I'll be the first board member to say our sound that says any more than full fifty houses must have two entrances, and I will stick to that.
So, and that's why we're going to continue with our review and, and better discussions in regard to design. That's why we also thought it was very important to provide that emergency access over in that particular portion of the, of the site.
I, I don't know how many people are going to live in this development that are, that are going to be wanting to work in the morning. But if somebody wants to get to I seventy, I don't know how many people work in Pittsburgh that would be living in here. You don't have, on Zeddy curve, there's no entrance or exit to I seventy. So everybody's going to be going Corey and up over Four O'Heal to get to seventy. That's, that seems like a lot of traffic.
Yeah, and that's where we're, go ahead.
Sure. So I guess one of the things that we did look at, we were looking at the overall plan is about half of the plan is empty nester community housing, and most of those folks are retired.
Retired.
Yeah, so when you look at the traffic, that drastically changes the trip amounts.
So are you getting into fifty-five plus?
No, it's not.
And how can you say they're going to be empty nesters?
Yeah, I'm like.
You're guessing.
No, not guessing.
You're all guessing.
No. Well, I mean, we can show you the statistics of it. We, we have other communities in the south of Pittsburgh that it's age-targeted. We don't specifically require you have to fit in five hours. But I could show you multiple communities that you may have one family in an empty nester community that moves in with kids, but ninety-nine percent of them are empty nesters that are buying just because of the floor plans and amenities that are in those homes.
But I, but I think, just to look at just questioning is about the level of service that's would be impacted. The question is, the question is, who's going to be responsible for the improvement of those roads, Corey and also for Lakeview? That's the issue. I'm dealing with the issue somewhere else right now.
Lakeview is a state road. Lakeview is a state road.
Well, he told us, he told us.
So there, there have been, there have been discussions.
But again, it's a state road.
Yes.
Then it's going to be, that's going to be an issue because of an H, don't have to get an HOP.
Yes.
Because then we, then it becomes a situation, a level of service and making improvement.
And the worst part is we're going to need them out of there. That's where they order all that, that house.
Lakeview is in poor condition. That's.
And as I mentioned, we'll also have a full traffic study that's going to be part of the requirement for this middle. It'll look at the distributions in regard to traffic, when traffic's going to be peak hours in regard to on and off the site and, and take all those items into account of how traffic would be distributed out of the property.
Go ahead.
Um, I had mentioned at the beginning, meaning, one of my concerns is because I live up there, I live in the Four O'Heal area. There is a R one zoning area, single-family homes. The only ones that aren't are on, they're all on my, my homes, I think, guys, on Lakeview. But that's, it's all R one. my my homes, I think, guys, on Lakeview. Um, but that's, it's all R one. Like, why can't this be in R one if you have a very small portion of this that is for, that you're claiming is why you need it to be in R two? Why can't you just make it in R one, separate those houses, because you have them separated in other places where they're little little monolos? And and make it in our R one zone instead of an R two? Because I'm also concerned, you said about ten feet from the house, like on the sides of the house. I thought that it was fifteen feet in this township from going to zoning hearing meetings, unless that's just because it's in an R two. Which again, which is why I'd like to see an R one, because I I go to a lot of these little communities and like these houses are just so, and then maybe from transient areas because people aren't living there for long periods of time because they're so cramped in there. And that changes demographics. You can't guarantee it's going to be all empty nesters. And I mean, I took that bus route. There's kids that stand on the street going up Corey Road, going down Corey Road, up Florville, up Lakeview, that if you have traffic coming out of there in the morning going to to work, that's really going to change that. And there are bus stops all along that road, and kids stand, that stand on the street, and that's a that's a concern. There's a, that's a lot of traffic for two, almost three hundred homes that potentially, if you can't guarantee anything, six hundred cars, that each house has two cars. Right? That that's a lot of traffic coming in and out of there. And I'm also concerned about the sewage thing that I brought up at the beginning, that when I was meeting and planning, you guys said you were not going to be asking for grant money for the sewage costs because it was going to be outrageous. And it's on our agenda tonight that it looks like we're already starting to ask for grant money for you guys. Are you, are you not going to be involved in asking for money from the government to get this project built?
To our knowledge, we're not asking for any of that.
So you haven't had any discussions with anybody in this township, including the township manager, regarding grant money?
Ryan, you're a little bit more knowledgeable. I don't believe.
We have to figure out how to pay for a pump station that right now is at one hundred percent capacity. Like, if if somebody on Lakeview Drive went and tried building on their home, or tried to put in, if more than five people tried to put addition on their home, they would be denied because there's no capacity. It's a big problem. It is it is severely deficient. So we need to figure out how to do that. We're not saying we're going to, we're going to we're going to pay, we're, we're going to pay our fair share to handle that. And that, that's all we're doing. We know improvements need to be made. We're working through those with Ouija, because it is owned by.
Right. And and according to what we just said, that they're not for, what Jeff's read, that they're not for doing something just for a project. And nobody else is coming forward.
Well, that's correct. That's why we have to figure out funding sources and figure out how to do it. We're not asking, we're, we have, we realize we have to pay our fair share, and that's what we've been in responsibility with Ouija.
And so we have had this discussion um, about that. Um, we learned last year um, that the uh, Corey Road pump station was nearing fast, it's not already there. I think there were maybe a more, you know, single-family homes that that could probably tap into that sewer shit. Um, so that's what's in front of us now. Um, and we're aware that township is ultimately responsible for the upgrades to these types of systems. Ouija primarily takes care of the maintenance of these systems. Um, and obviously the conveyance lines, but we we need to go after money that's available to us. This project, through the help of our county engineer, popped up, and this is on the radar because this is this thought process has been around for a couple of years now. And we now understand that the capacity in that pump station is very limited for the entire sewer shed, not just for the development, but for the entire sewer shed.
How much is on that sewer shed? What areas on that sewer shed?
Map, I don't think we have it.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, so so this would, this would pump into that sewer shed. And that would.
Your your request was just to do this project and nothing else. So this isn't going to change anything for anybody else along there. And if you want to do it for the whole whole sewer shed, then they benefit from it. I'm not a problem with that. But just to go and do it for them, I have a problem.
Well, we're going to be required to have that shit. The 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 upgrades are going to require capacity. It's not going to be just for our development. That's that pump station will be sized to have capacity for other folks in that sewer shed to tap into. It's not just for our own. The D E P, yeah, the D E P will not let you do that. Their regulations do know a lot of that.
While we don't have a specific number of where this pump station is going, the intent is to completely rebuild this pump station to meet the future needs of the township. We're applying for remoney now to help offset the cost of that. We're in the process of doing that five thirty-seven plan update right now for the township. It'll take into consideration the entirety of the water jet, not just this particular development. I was at this pump station on Friday as the first one I've been able to head up to go to this pump station. And I assure you that of all the pump stations in South Surban, this is the one we have to address, regardless of whether it is development or not. This pump station needs help. Hundred percent.
How much capacity you put into that pump station?
How much?
What's the way, when you do the, when you do your design, what's the capacity going to be, excess capacity?
We're working on an X five thirty-seven plan update right now. I can't give you a specific number, but right now we're working with about one point seven million gallons a day.
And what is it, okay?
Right now, it's point five.
And if I'm correct.
We're better than tripling the capacity.
If I'm correct, December seventeenth is the last day making the application, am I correct?
Correct.
Are you willing to put up to twenty-five hundred for that?
Twenty-five hundred dollars?
To do the application?
Yeah, so we have to do that. That's the first I've heard of that.
My my recollections were that it was sized just for this.
No, you can never, that's that's against the law. It has to be designed, sized for the watershed.
The letter from Mike.
Were you at the meetings that I was at? Were you at the meetings that I was at? Were you at the meetings that I was at? I saw him sort of before. Ouija. Yeah. That's that's.
I believe the letter we received from Ouija about the project, it like specifically stated that that any funding would not, you know, that that concern was.
That's not correct. Do you want to read the letter?
I have it.
Good reading.
Hey Jeff, read that to the Ouija board, okay? We're going to move on. Any other?
I have another question about this.
What about?
The development, perhaps the plan, perhaps the planners, with the condition of the state roads and the township roads, zoned it the way they did for a reason. Now, I can understand them wanting to develop it. It's a good piece of property. But you know, things are sometimes done for a reason, and we haven't done anything to address the reasons. I get what you all want to do. I have another question. Rick or Wetzel? You did the work for Bergen Manor, right?
Yes, we did.
Will we have a rock climbing wall like we do out there, Parkland?
Once, once again, that's it. Apples to oranges in regard to to the plan. What, once?
Go, go, take one day, walk there to Dairy Queen, get Dairy Queen, walk out the door, look there were rock climbs on the wall.
Site is under construction.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, that's that site is under construction.
Look at the rock climbing wall.
Okay, is there any other questions? Okay, I want to thank you very, very much for your briefing this evening.
Thank you.
Very enlightening. Uh, we've got a good taste for it, and uh, everybody heard a good presentation. Thank you very, very much. And thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. Okay, let's move on, please. Uh, letter E. Uh, holding tank agreement to a SoBe Real Estate for the property located at forty-two eighty-four Drive. Mr. Stenning?
Yeah, I was like.
My name is Andy Burr. I'm from K two Engineering. We're the uh, engineer for SoBe Real Estate as well as Form Energy. Um, the owner of the property is requesting a six thousand gallon holding tank because there is no sewage available at this particular property. Uh, we made application to the township. Um, I understand I just need to come explain this to you guys and ask for your approvals.
Mr. Stenning, what do we need to know here?
Um, this is a holding tank that's being, uh, needs to be approved by the township for a, for the property at thirty-two, thirty-four, they do not have public sewer. Um, do you have a holding tank?
Yeah.
You're just replacing?
Yeah, it's a bigger, a bigger tank ultimately. Um, changing use of the property slightly. Uh, but one thing I could tell you is that the Form Energy, the tenant of of the space is adding jobs into your township, right? Um, uh, they've made a substantial investment to the building. As a result, there'll be more people working at the building, which is why they need a bigger tank.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any further discussion?
Yeah, the one thing I'd like to tell you guys is that it's been like two years we've been working within your township, and we've received exceptional service at all levels, and the front desk, the fire department, the building inspectors, everything we do here has been first class, so.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried five zero. You're very welcome. Letter F, I'm making a motion to uh, table this particular item. I need a second, please. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. All of the favor of the uh, motion to table this particular item, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried five zero. Letter G.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the meeting, there will be a meeting on Monday at seven PM for tentative budget. Or tentative budget consideration. Then that'll provide time. We'll have, we are rescheduling our uh, regular meeting for December twenty. So December thirtieth is canceled, and December thirteenth will be our new regular meeting, where final budget will be up.
So it's November twenty-eighth at seven PM next week.
December twenty will be the regular.
Okay, letter G, resolution accepting certain public improvements in phase four of the Strabane Manor Residential Development. Uh, Mr. Stenning, will you give us a brief note?
The township has then received a request from Miranda Homes uh, for Strabane Manor Residential Development to accept the public improvements of Strabane Manor Phase Four. Under the code, Salvo specifically, upon completion of the final inspection and approval of the public improvements, the proper shall request the township accept the dedication of the public improvements that are accompanied by decent dedication and the list of schedules for all the instruments and writers. In addition, to the developer's agreement we have with Miranda Homes for Phase Four, the township agreed to accept the street, the curb and storm systems provided in eighteen-month maintenance bond equal to fifteen percent of the positive improvements being dedicated to the township it provides. Public improvements consist of a fifteen-foot right-of-way and the roadway and stormwater facilities lying within the right-of-way as described in the attached Exhibit A as part of the uh, resolutions. And depicted in a map on Exhibit, the attached Exhibit B, as well as the provided maintenance bond exhibit for remaining portion of Shawnee Drive. In addition, the developer will post a maintenance bond of the amount of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars, which is fifteen percent of the total for a period of eighteen months as required pursuant to the Salvo and the developer's agreement. So in preparation for this evening and for the board's consideration, the township engineer and public works director have expected the improvements and find them acceptable. Also, the township solicitor has reviewed the deeds of dedication for the remaining portion of Shawnee Drive, finds this acceptable.
Okay, Mr. Burr, thank you. Uh, Mr. Murphy, thanks for the second. Uh, any further discussion on the issue? All those in favor of the uh, motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, I'd like to go on record that the, that I'm abstaining from this particular vote. Letter G. Letter H, motion releasing the remaining amount of the performance bond for Phase Four of the Strabane Manor Residential Development. Mr. Stenning?
So the township, in addition, it relates very much so to the previous item. Township has received a request from Miranda Homes to release the remaining portion of the performance bond for Phase Four in the amount of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty cents. In pursuit to the Salvo, for approval of all the improvements in the plan, the developer shall be released immediately pursuant to the performance bond posted to guarantee the property installation of those improvements for the phase that which they will build. In addition, pursuant to the development agreement that we have with Miranda for Phase Four, the township agreed to accept the street and curb and storm system like we reported before, with the maintenance bond of fifteen percent of the positive improvements dedicated to that. In the event the board approves the resolution accepting the public improvements for Phase Four, as part of agenda item nine G, the last item, it is recommended board release the remaining amount of the performance bond for the phase. Any issues that may arise with the accepted improvements will then be covered under the previously approved maintenance.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Stenning. Need a motion to approve. Thanks, Mr. Murphy.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lukicich. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I, I'm abstaining from this particular vote also. That's letter H. Okay. Let's uh, move on. Resolution authorized signatories for township bank accounts.
So the purpose of the side is just to request the board approve the addition of the finance director, Jenna Williams, and some checks.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried five zero. Resolution requesting H twenty, defensive flood control grant for Corey Pump Station upgrade. Mr. Stenning?
So the East Hill PA program was established in two thousand and eight and authorized the Commonwealth Finance Authority to provide single-year or multi-year grants to assist with the construction of drinking water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer projects. Since the county engineer prayed in format, he was been determined that enough area of Corey Road pump station qualifies to play in the area of the program. This project would involve an upgrade to increase the capacity of the pump station for the Corey watershed. As Ouija has indicated, that this pump station is at or nearing full capacity. The process project is estimated, Ouija, is estimated at two point two five four million. And the program is fifty fifty matching grants, the township has seen the last one point seven million from the program. Board's drive of them forward and due to the known technical issue of this grant not not to exceed twenty-five hundred would be used to engage K L H engineers to prepare the application. Um, with this is the resolution that's pretty standard for this program, as well as the the letter that stated October thirty-first that you've seen tonight from Ouija, um, providing the the estimate of the project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Need a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lukicich. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried five zero. Letter K, need a motion to uh, table this particular item. Thank you, Mr. Burns. Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor of tailing this uh, item, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried five zero. Letter L, motion approving a number of understanding, uh, need a motion to table this particular item. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Need a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lukicich. Any further, well, no. Everyone in favor of uh, table this item, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried five zero. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Lukicich. Need a second? Thank you. All of the favorites say aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.